Welcome everyone, Washington City Council Meeting at 7:00 PM, today's date, July 28th, 2015. Welcome everyone. Anyone here would like to speak? Ready? Anyone? It's really quiet. Okay. Let's just go ahead and go to number three. Bids, contract proposals, service requests, change order of wastewater two project there in 2015. Jessica, if you'll have a...you can have the floor.
Okay, this is the proposed change order for the painting of the clearwells at the water treatment plant. There are three clearwells there. This change order includes replacing some steel angle that holds up curtains in the clearwall number two. When we originally did the inspection of the tanks to determine what specifications of repairs were needed, we only took down one tank and made the assumption that they were all in about the same shape. They were like painted and all built at the same time. So when we got in there and started sandblasting and removing that old paint, we were able to see that the edges on that angle were like nice. They were nice then, which hard to get good paint to stick to the tip of a pencil kind of edge like that. So it was determined we had an inspector was on the site and made that recommendation and we agreed with that recommendation. And that was an increase in price of $4,200 to replace those steel angles. We've got new curtains and get a good job and wanted to make sure we did it right. The other change order amount or item on the change order is for some caulking around the base of the tanks to create a good waterproof seal from the base of the steel to the concrete foundation. They provided a price to take all of that old grout and caulk and recaulke everything for all three tanks. We may decide, I've kind of talked to the contractor with our inspector, that we may not need to do all the way around every tank in its entirety, but that's the highest it would be. I would say this would be a not to exceed price, but there could be less. But we went ahead and got a price, they're there, they're able to do that work. And the last amount is an additional 15 days in time, just because we have a backup situation, had to order the material, is add a little bit of time and just want to make sure we wrap that all up. If you've been down there, two of the tanks are wrapping up. I think one tank is completely done and back in service. The other one, the interior is almost done, they're going to be wrapping up the exterior. And that works moving along. They'll be done in this time period. There's no...this should be the last close out things as we've...all the unforeseen should now be out of the way because they're sandblasting everything. That's generally when you'll run into some things that you maybe didn't anticipate is once you get all that paint off and expose that metal. So I guess I would like to ask the council to approve this change order with a not to exceed $10,300 total.
Question. The caulking, that something we could possibly do in-house?
We probably could. The majority of that price is the actual caulking material itself and we are pretty busy at the plant right now, working on some other projects, so I don't really have a lot of people freed up right now. And since they're there, it'd be nice to kind of get them all complete, wrapped up and move on.
If I can add something to that. When you bid a project and you have that, if that caulking leaks or does something happens to that, you want...
It's kind of...it would be warranted.
It would be warranted and if it has a fail...it fails or happens a failure in the caulking process, it's something that we would have done. I think having the contractor and hold his speaks the fire to make him responsible for his work and us doing a part of that project, I don't think would be good to do that. And that holds the warranty, what's the warranty on it? A year maybe or something?
Yeah, for that type of work, it would be a...and here's warranties. If there was a problem with the caulking material or installation, we could go back and they would come back and make that repair. Again, we could and we have done that kind of thing in the past, but again, some of this was just trying to be timed, you know, and other things that we're tackling at the plant first of all. And they're already on site and have the materials, know and have the personnel, so...
And if it's coming into his middle of his work site, I don't know if he would even would hold true to a warranty if you did a portion of his work. I just don't know if he would hold true to the warranty.
All right, okay. Now, my understanding that they're only going to caulk where the grout is missing, is that correct? Or they're going to remove all of the grout and then reseal?
There's a couple of different ways. The price that's proposed to the council is if they redo all of that, you know, all the grout around all three tanks and recaulke. So that's the price provided. But there's some areas where if the council, you know, didn't want to take, do all of that work, we could...some of it is in decent shape, we could leave it and only use the areas that were showing failure, starting to break off, you know, crumble off. So I'd ask them to price it this way, just in case, worst case.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that question is it says here, seal them to be installed in areas that are damaged or where the grout is missing. Let me add...
That might be worth what they cost. There are some areas that aren't there, but this is what they needed to do and that's what they cost.
Let me add a word of caution on patching. It may look good on the outer part, but underneath it could look bad and patching it in that area or not doing it at all over time, I think these tanks, we want them to last, what, 20 years?
Right. Help to use them for a good big time. And I'm going to...inspector has been on site, he's going to be stuck in that file on Tuesday. I'll get his opinion on what best course he thinks we should do, but again, this should be the most expensive that that would be. His expertise.
Question?
Any other questions?
Question.
These are all unforeseen additions that we could not perceive in a normal inspection?
Correct.
So these would have come up no matter what?
Yes, yes.
And this does include caulking the whole tank in this? In my opinion, it should be done, the whole tank, you do it like first time.
This includes, I might have missed something, includes replacing and repairing the damaged caulk around the base and the price for each tank. So if something's completely intact, they're not going to pull it out. If it looks like it's a good waterproof seal, very thoroughly, looks like some of this loose or not broken, everybody, that's what is going to go, the way it reads. I think I misunderstood when I first committed.
That was my question, correct?
And I think what we have to really look at here is that after looking at the bid and the detailed work, is that there was no way, shape or form could we have drawn down about all three tanks at one time and take a look at all three and to see inside. So the way that I'm understanding it and understood it since Jessica, since it started, was they only took one tank down and looked at it and evaluated that tank to see what the others...and evaluated off that one tank to see what it would cost. And the other two tanks was a maybe hit or miss, it could be more or less, because we had to have two tanks up running to supply the water.
That's mostly the gist of it. We had one tank down, we had them come in and do a general inspection and this is a third party, someone who...that's what they specialize in, a structural engineer, but this is what they do, inspecting tanks. They write, help write the spec and it's kind of a third party. They're not tied to any particular contractor in their particular painter. And their job is to...they want to do a good job for us because they want to continue to get work and do further inspections and quite good. So to the point, yes, some of this was hard to tell and some of it you don't notice as much until you're out. You've got equipment and depressors and stuff working around the outside of the tanks that maybe you start banging around at the base, some of that grout might start to fall loose where it wasn't...it didn't maybe appear in the initial inspection. But again, yes, this was taken off by a tank inspection. And this is a pretty small amount of the overall project, you know, percent.
Councilor Simpson, do you have a question?
Well, my question is, are we going to have...we've already had an $18,000 change order already on one. And this is the one that you say they inspect. Are we going to have another $18,000 on the next one?
No, no, no. All three tanks are now down, are all been out of service. One tank is being put back in service, about two tanks out now. And this was the last tank that they sandblasted on the interior and the exterior. So they want to expose everything they would have exposed as un-happened. They're almost completely done with the second tank interior, just some additional paintings on the exterior and working on the third tank now. It's completely, been completely cleaned of existing paint. So anything, there shouldn't be anything else. They've installed curtains, you know, they've been able to inspect each component of all the tanks and be able to make those repairs. There shouldn't be anything else. And they're planning to be done in two weeks, you know, two to three weeks. So it's just a matter of getting the layers of paint on.
It looks like caulking though would be something that would be a normal update. I mean, it wouldn't last. It looks like that would be something that the inspector would have looked at or whoever would have evaluated this thing. You take $6,000 and you hold on a month to caulk. Now, I don't know if caulking would...
It's...I think it's grout and caulking potentially, you know, but again, you're right. These things are the actual parameters, they're pretty good, they're around. And this isn't including anything on the interior. All the caulking that's done interior to any bolts and seams, that's all on the included. This was something just on the exterior of the tank where the tank sits on the foundation, that seam line there. So it's nothing inherent to the actual ceiling of the water inside the tank leaking out. It's just making sure that moisture doesn't get under the tank between the concrete foundation and the tank itself, so you don't get rusting occurring at that seam on the exterior. But again, at the time, I don't think it was...it wasn't that list. You know, they're making sure their what structural integrity, what painting is going to be done. And it looked okay, but again, you get in there working on the exterior, maybe some of the things around that grout, some of the places that...I don't know the extent of it. I think we've actually in-house done this kind of work on other tanks in our system periodically, so you're right. It's not something that we do once and that's it, but it's just another maintenance thing. They were there, on site, had the ability to do it. I asked them to price it because again, we're...it's kind of a...want to get it resolved. We're already in there working on all these tanks and get them a tip-top shape and move on. It's kind of what I'm trying to get done. And if the council doesn't feel comfortable with them doing that work, we can pull it out, start caulking, do it ourselves, but it just might not happen as quickly as...
Well, if you do it sub, you may not have those friends. Those guys probably got more experience than in-house. They call it caulking. I mean, you got to know what you're doing. I know what caulking is. You got to make sure you put it in right in the seam.
You want a good job.
Right. That would be pretty right. And it takes someone that's experienced to do it.
Well, you have that warranty factor. That if someone intervenes in a project, we lose your warranty. If anything that we do causes a reverse action to something that they had did inside, the warranty could be voided.
I agree with you.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve change order number two, not to exceed $10,300, an additional 15 days on the contract for CNS quality services.
Discussion. The motion is that you approve the change order of Water Treatment Plant Two, 2015, for $1,300?
$10,300.
Yeah, I thought you said, okay, $10,300. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
One name? Aye. I have the motion as adopted. Number four, we go to the HRB and DOB and Planning and Zoning Recommendations. I'll ask Bobby to read the recommendations from the HRB.
We have quite a few. COA 1527 Landmark Stone, Andy Spito, applicant and FDF Properties, Chad McCoy, owner, proposed landscaping and streetscape changes at 114 South Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the landscaping and streetscape plan, including seater, theater, arbor, and 42-inch white picket fence as discussed. COA 15x29 Michael and Margaret Sue Masters, applicant, owner, proposed to paint the home at 202 West Flage Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of painting the home in the colors Anchors Way, Body, and Sierra Hills for the trim as presented in the application and report, with the condition that the outbuildings be done in the opposite scheme. COA 1530 Ryan and Beth Clark, applicant, owner, proposed to paint the garage at 207 East Flage Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of painting the outbuilding in the colors Universal Khaki for the body, Eclipse on doors and shutters, and Panda White for the trim presented in the application and report. COA 1531 Kay Clark, applicant, owner, proposes to paint the ramp and replace storm door at 115 South Second Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of a storm door and painting the ramp in a semi-gloss block. COA 1532 The Rose Group LLC, applicant, owner, proposes to paint, change slash add awnings and signage at 127 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of painting the trim and rear, block portion of the building pavilion beige. Also approval to change business name on signage from Plantation to Bardstown. A new rear awning can be administratively approved if the applicant chooses to install one. COA 1533 The Daniel Lineball House LLC, applicant, owner, proposes to replace wood siding with cement fiber board at 205 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of siding replacement as discussed, with the condition that the smooth face of the cement board be facing out. COA 1534 Bobby Nattery, applicant, and Francis McCoy, owner, proposed to install a bracketed sign at 210 North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of a 12-square-foot bracketed sign as discussed. COA 1535 Robert Davis, applicant, and DeVal Lodge, owner, proposed to install a new awning and light at 222 and a half North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of a coach light and metal framed with blue fabric awning only after all options of original metal awning repair slash replacement have been explored. COA 1536 Kim Conway, applicant, owner, proposes to install fencing at 211 West Flage Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of both types of fencing, with the condition that the rear fence be not taller than six feet and the front fence be not taller than 3.5 feet and that final plans be submitted and approved by a preservation coordinator and board chairman. COA 1537 Jay Allen Insurance Agency, applicant, and Kentucky Farm Bureau, owner, proposed to install signage at 119 East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of all signs, with the condition that the north-facing wall sign be reduced in height so as to not impede upon the view of architectural features with the new sizes being administratively approved before installation. COA 1538 Lynn Shelton, applicant, owner, proposes to paint the structure at 213 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the painting of the lower brick portion of the north facade in light French gray and the upper portion of the northern facade in classic French gray.
Mayor, I make a proposal, we approve CAO 15-27-29-30-31-32-33-34-35-36-37-38 with the recommendations from the historic review.
I'll say. 167. Discussion. Motion on table is to approve COA's 15-27, 29, 30, 31, 32, 33, 34, 35, 36, 37, 38 according to HRB regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, ahs. Motion is adopted. Correspondents, it is, hey, 2016 is proclamation of Bible reading week and brief description on that. I will turn it over to you, which you give a description and tell briefly what's going on.
Pastor Freddie Griggs. Organization called Kentucky 120 United has proposed to read the Bible in its entirety from Genesis 1 through Revelations 22 all the way through out loud, starting January 1st at midnight on the first minute of the year. This will be held simultaneously in all 120 counties across the state of Kentucky. We have permission to use the visitor center downtown Bardstown. That's what we'll be doing, the Bible reading. We're going to use a New King James Version, large print, and be simple, simple reading. We're looking for 30 leaders, hopefully a leader from different churches. Most of the churches, I feel confident will come up the leader. We're looking for 360 individuals, 12 per leader to read the Word for 15 minutes out loud. And at that time, we will have each of those persons sign the back of the Bible, people that read out loud, and then we'd like to present that Bible to the city and to our mayor in the...so it's something that's gone throughout all the 120 counties. Any questions?
Please contact if you want to get them on.
In Nelson County, right now, I'm the leader. And we're sending a letter to all the churches and asking for...to get our 30 leaders. Thirty...the 30 leaders will be in charge of a three-hour section and in that three hours, they will be taking care of their 12 individuals that will read. Okay?
Ms. Bobby will have it worked up. We have this at this afternoon and she'll have that worked up.
Well, you won't want it actually until December, correct?
We don't need it till December, but that's...
Okay. And then you'll help me with the Word.
Thank you. It's called a Bible.
A proclamation. I don't need any words for that.
B will be the proclamation of the Bardstown Baptist Church. Bobby, will you please read the proclamation?
Whereas Bardstown Baptist Church was constituted on September 30th, 1815, as Salem Baptist Church, and whereas in 1848 Salem Baptist Church became Bardstown Baptist Church, and whereas Bardstown Baptist Church has had a major influence and presence in the religious foundation of Bardstown in Nelson County for 200 years, and whereas Bardstown Baptist Church continues its mission of a church for life, connecting, growing, and caring. Now therefore, Mayor John Royalty, City of Bardstown, will proclaim August 2nd, 2015 as the date to honor the historic site marking for the Bardstown Baptist Church's 200th anniversary 1815 to 2015, and ask that all citizens of this community observe and take part in the celebration sponsored by Cox's Station Chapter NSDar.
Since there's no objections, the motion to approve the proclamation is adopted by unanimous consent.
Well, okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Number six, this regular council meeting, 7/14/2015, there's no objection, we'll adopt the motion to approve amendments of July 14th, 2015. Since there's no objections, the motion will be approved. To approve the amendments is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you. And the finance committee, under number seven, the financial report, the finance committee meeting will be held Thursday, July 30th at 5:00 PM in the mayor's conference room. The working session on the fourth will give all council the opportunity to discuss any recommendations or results of that meeting. All right, we're going to the first reading of ordinances, we have none. And we're going to be the second reading, Bobby was pretty good, the second reading for B 2015-17.
Summary of ordinance, B 2015-17, an ordinance amending and adopted as amended, zoning map entitled zoning map cities of Bardstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating Granite Drive Lot 7 Bedrock Manor, Bardstown, as LIP planned unit development for a use serving alcohol by the drink, Section 6.16D1. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Lot number seven amended Bedrock Manor final platte as recorded in platte cabinet 16, slot 197 in the Nelson County Clerk's office. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
Mayor, I make the motion that we approve the ordinance B 2015-17.
I'll read it. I'll second it. Discussion. The motion's on the floor to approve B 2015-17, the rezoned number of 2439 Bedrock Development First, and at this time, I'll ask for individual vote. And I'll start with Councilman Cooper.
Aye.
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 The vote is, I'll ask...
Six, zero.
Six, zero. Motion's adopted.
Summary of ordinance number B 2015-18, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended, zoning map entitled zoning map cities of Bardstown, Bloomfield, Fairfield, New Haven, and Nelson County, Kentucky, by designating 112 North Third Street, Bardstown, as B2, planned unit development, PUD, for a use serving alcohol by the drink, Section 6.12D, option number two. The Nelson County Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval based on findings of fact in the record. The property is described as follows. Founded on the east by Third Street, on the south by Raspberry Alley, on the west by Mulberry Alley, and on the north by property owned by David Oslander et al., formerly W.O. Styles. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. This summary was certified by Timothy Butler, City Attorney.
Mayor, comment or? I move to approve ordinance B 2015-18, rezon 2440 Lawson Building, and I yield the floor for second. There's motion on the floor to approve B 2015-18 to rezon number 244, the Lawson Building, LLC. At this time, I'll ask for an individual vote. And I will start with Councilman Simpson, please.
Aye.
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 All right, motion's adopted, unanimous. Thank you. And we'll go to number nine, reports of staff and committees. Uh, we'll start with A. As everyone knows, the, uh, in the budget, we passed one of the mosquito spraying machine. We will begin to train mosquitoes on the twenty-ninth, weather, the conditions that are permitted. I will ride and train the young man individual that has, that has been approved to drive this vehicle. It's just a pickup truck, but, uh, I will route them and show him how to do this and train him as the state has trained myself and Bobby Simpson to do it. So, well, I think we've been well rehearsed since two thousand and five, haven't we?
Yeah.
So, uh, that, uh, that program will take place, and, uh, we're gonna meet about nine forty-five, but I will wait until the conditions are right and make sure that, uh, that we can do that. Uh, the second is B. Uh, we have, we had, uh, a lot of police officer position that was vacant, and we filled that position, and, uh, had a lot of good candidates, but, uh, only one can, can be there. We are restrained by, um, that position and budget, so that's, we've only had one candidate. And once he's been informed by the chief, then I can make that up. Any other counsel?
If I could ask you a question.
Uh-huh.
At one time, we had a police officer who was in the military or something, and we were holding slot.
He's already back, I think, yes. Okay. No, and this, this slot was one that was left over by, uh, is vacant. Okay. And he, uh, and by law, if he's, if he leaves our military leave or anything, you have to hold that position. Yes, can I? Yes, sir.
Question. Was it a trained officer or an academy officer?
Aye, academy. Uh, wanting to get, uh, new fresh blood in where they trained and, uh, where they, I don't know, it's, uh, is it only perspective on having younger officer and, what is it?
I have a question. Where's they go to the academy? I think we have a policy or something he signed that he committed to work for Bardstown for two years after he goes to academy to read.
I think that was there when, I think when it was government money, and, uh, I think Larry, uh, Larry couldn't be here now, he had, uh, another plan that he had to get to. Uh, but I think that was when government funding come out, and it was, what was that called? Uh, was it?
I thought we had something.
And you may be right, Councilman.
My recollection, we had, I thought we had a policy that we proved, the councilman approved if we sent it to him. Reason why we're the local train, they have to commit theirself.
That's if we pay for it. That's if we pay for it.
And I think, I miss, we are going to see the academy, so I think you, you might be right. And if it is, uh, he will sign the contract or whatever, it will be held true to that, yes.
But I can have Larry give you everybody a shout out on the case.
I'll, I'll shoot you every one of your mail letters. That's the end of it. No. What is that?
Uh, on committees, Mayor, I just mentioned, uh, I said I got a meeting with Jessica regarding the annexation event last week. She gave me a lot of information regarding the additional cost that could be associated with, uh, additional annexation, and we covered a lot of things, street, light, uh, equipment, personnel, quite a bit. It was very opening, and I, I had this information, everybody had assimilated, you know, just to let you know, I'm kind of, I'm looking.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, anything else?
The street and, uh, solid waste committee will meet at, uh, on Wednesday the fifth at five P.M. in the mayor's conference room. This is in reference to. Carriage truck. Carriage truck and wrecker purchase.
What we have coming? What was? I have contact attorney general office. Attorney General Office returned my call. Attorney General would give me his opinion as soon as I receive it. I will let the council to do it.
Anything else? Uh. Tracy?
Yes.
Anything?
Uh, the auditor started June thirtieth. She said the count went really quick and smoothly as it did last year thanks to having Jason as her inventory clerk. And then she'll be back in September to do her, uh, trial and ears on our account and then have a report. I think, well, I'm, I think she's gonna track in August and then show other report by the end of the session for the council.
Jessica?
Uh, just wanted to inform the council and the community that we have a retiree this month. Uh, Mr. Pat Douglas at the Cherry Riley Plant is retiring, and, uh, wanna wish him well in his retirement. I think Friday is gonna be his last day, so if you see Pat around town, uh, be sure to congratulate him on his retirement. We have since hired a young man to, uh, this week, I believe started Monday, um, to take his place. Mr. Corey Yonahue is the, is the new wastewater treatment plant operator training, so we wanna welcome him on board. After that, I think, just nothing else need to report.
Mr. Larry Hamilton, Chief of the.
They, uh, excuse me, got word from the state that, uh, they're going to clean the dam from trees at Simpsons Lake, so, uh, highway parking, it's their highway, and fortunately they get to do the cleaning. And, uh, we just sent them the, uh, the limits of construction of the right-way lines and the, and the lines dealing with the spillway when it was added later, and they will hopefully do us a good job removing all the trees from, uh, possibly making a path for water to go through our dam. So, uh, or their dam. So that'll be happening this, hopefully later this summer, fall, and, uh, and that's about all. On the garbage, we got, we went and looked at a garbage, front-loading garbage truck, uh, went to Owensboro, the mayor and Ben and I went to, and so, uh, we are close to buying the truck on state price contract. We, uh, need to do the dumpsters, and, uh, it's a one-man operation instead of three-man operation. So we'll have to change units out and, uh, reapply, uh, our assets, and we're, I'm thinking now, or we're thinking now, that we may wanna remodel the two and three yard, or at least three yard dumpsters to also be front-loaded if we can do it, and, uh, fill up that position. So, uh, keep the truck rolling, if you will, in a full forty-hour week if we can get there. But starting point, we're not quite there because the larger units that take the four and six and eight yard units, uh, you know, got a lot of, about probably a hundred and twenty-five or a hundred and fifty smaller units that, uh, we haven't tackled at the moment. So we'll, we'll be reporting on that at our, me and committee meeting a little more. And we've also looked at a gravel truck that we're gonna have to bid, a used unit. And then we'll be talking about, uh, some limitations that we have as far as what we, what I'd like to see us do, uh, and bring to you for consideration, is that we would do so many home pickups, like come by your house so many times a year, let's, just for the sake of talk, four times, anything over that, and then we'll pick up two cubic yards or pickup load full of material. If it's more than that, we can charge fifteen dollars per extra pickup load full set out in your allowance on empty. So none of that's been decided, but with this gravel truck, we'll be able to handle maybe reducing our workers' comp claim, uh, heavier stuff, uh, that we call normal household. And, uh, we also have been struggling with how to deal with, uh, people that sell out lots and lots of furniture when they move out, and nobody wants it. And then we, I think we should charge for that, and have a way to charge for that, the landlords or somebody who property is on. So it's a, so it's a matter of some, uh, discretion, as you will, where you slice those flats. You know, what we'll give away is normal service for an extra buck a month, I think we charged so many years ago when we talked about it, to cover our costs. But, uh, so this gravel truck that we've looked at, or Ben's looked at, is a used unit, and it'll hold maybe twenty yards or something, twenty-three yards, eighteen, in that range. And, uh, we don't know what kind of bid we'll get, but we've seen one that we're interested in and went down, because it's over twenty thousand, we'll have to bid. So it'll just be wide open to bids, you know, what we get, and we all can approve whatever you think's in your best interest. So anyhow, that's something we'll be working on between now and, uh, our committee meeting next week.
What has, what has brought this around is, is because of the workers' comp issue, and, uh, after riding around seeing how many dumpsters we have, about three, four, and seeing exactly how some of these have to be pulled out by hand, you can understand the elbow, shoulder strains, uh, back strains, knee strains, uh, so you can, you can only imagine and understand why now. So to curb that, you have to take issue with the way it's done. And by doing what we're gonna do is, hopefully we'll cut that way down, and the kind of things that, and to explain the gravel truck, to ride by and look at what they have to pick up by hand, uh, that goes from mattresses and bed bugs and it's unthoughtful. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect our workers to have to do that, 'cause I don't think you here would wanna go up there and do that themselves. So anyway, so that's why I have, uh, been on this program for many years in my seat on the council, so we're, we're there with that issue too.
How old is the unit?
Well, the one that he saw that he logged, I think it's about ten years old.
It has like forty or sixty thousand?
Yeah, I don't know. But you could put another truck under this unit. You know, it's a, it's like a piece of heavy equipment, it's got a, it's like a truck bed, and it's got a hydraulic system that I'm not sure how many hours or operation it has, but, uh, it could be rebuilt, and so, and, uh, to get into it, we wanted to go slow and spend, let's say forty-five thousand dollars, I think is what I think I remember seeing. And a new one might be over a hundred, and we just don't spend that much for, no more than we use it. But in Owensboro, they love it. They say it really helps, and they have one, and that's after storm, it's especially useful.
Now mechanic, I think we'll need to look at that. So he's, he's a regular mechanic, he needs, he's impressed with this.
So we may get a better, you know, we, by opening it up, and we'll put it out to, to meet, you know, the different people, and if somebody has a better one, we certainly will be willing, wanting to look at it.
Mayor, that's all I have. I have a question. Officer Timothy Simpson, anything? Nothing.
Thank you. Been done enough hours.
Chief Martin Howard of the Bardstown Fire Department.
Uh, the fire department staff continues to implement the installation of, uh, rescue equipment on the new apparatus that we bought. Uh, also, the interviews for the new staff have started. We're interviewing two to three a day, uh, starting last week, so we have, uh, a good stack of applicants and good quality applicants. Uh, I hope to be able to bring forth, uh, some good, good applicants for suggestion within the next couple of weeks.
Can't wait to see it. Okay, and then, uh, last on my list is, uh, city has, uh, worked, uh, had several meetings with, uh, Judge Dean Watts, and, uh, sent a proposal today, and it was rejected, so, uh, he said he would just, uh, will do his recreation department and will run his county rec the way he sees fit, so. There we are on that. Okay, any unfinished business, Ken? New business? Bobby, would you read municipal orders?
Municipal order number M two thousand fifteen seventeen. A municipal order accepting the application for an assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at seven oh nine Kurt Street, Bardstown, Kentucky, and expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS chapter ninety-nine point five nine five at, at, what do you say there? Ken, at SEQ? I never know. Okay.
Falls. Falls, yeah. Secundor?
Secundor, okay. Be it ordered by the city council of the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, section one, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at seven oh nine Kurt Street, Bardstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. This order shall take place, affect, shall, this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and reported according to law. Would you like for me to group these or individual?
Let, question individual. I have a question.
Sir.
The, uh, just expressing my ignorance, I guess, the tax assessment moratorium applies in areas outside of the historic district.
All of the city limits.
All the city limits.
And the county has one as well.
Depending on the age of the home.
Twenty-five years or older.
I, I just.
Yes.
Can we go ahead and group them?
Okay, thank you. Municipal order M two thousand fifteen eighteen. A municipal order accepting the application for an assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at one eleven South Center Street, Bardstown, Kentucky, and expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. Be it ordered by the city council of the City of Bardstown, Kentucky, section one, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at one eleven South Center Street, Bardstown, Kentucky, is hereby accepted and further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in KRS chapter ninety-nine point five nine five. Section two, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and reported according to law.
Mayor, comment or order? I move to accept municipal order M two thousand and fifteen dash seventeen, and municipal order two thousand fifteen dash eighteen, that apply to seven oh nine Kurt Street and one 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 South Center Street respectively. Uh, yield a floor for second.
Discussion. Motion's on the table to, for municipal order M two thousand fifteen seventeen, M two thousand fifteen eighteen, the tax moratorium for seven oh nine Kurt Street and one eleven South Center Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes, ahs, and ahs. Motion's adopted. Thank you, Pastor. And number C, it's a real one. I will, I will want to appoint Kathy Graham as ex-official member of the Bardstown Housing Board, and what that is, she's basically is my eyes and ears for that board because I can't attend all, so, and she will be reporting to me on, uh, what housing is doing.
She will be chairing the meeting.
She will be attending the meeting, ex-official. She will, I know what ex-official is, but she will be attending the meeting. Only problem I have, Mayor, I have served on it for many years. And that job can be, I mean, one member can be a busy position. And she will receive many telephone calls, complaints, you have family complaints all the time. Only problem I see, they will be calling City Hall, since she is your Zaggity. She will be taking time up here at City Hall. Some of the families who have the place, they would be, they would call them. That's the only problem I have, Mayor, just the commitment on that position. And I have served most, all, most council members I've served on it. And that would be my concern. And you are going to have complaints. There is some time is trawling. I have, I mean, going in, and there's some family can go in, and they will call you. They called me down, I'm not on the bowling. So that's the only problem I have.
I understand she is well-balanced, and she is the mayor's appointed, and that's, that's who I, I have chosen. She fits the bill, what I need, and she is my opponent. So we're going to go to D, the new appointment of the Tourism Hospitality Association, Didi King. So if there's no objection, I will adopt a motion to approve the appointment of Didi King to the Tourism Commission to fill the unexpired term of Shilla, Osborn. Since there's no objections, the motion is approved. The new appointment is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you. We go to number 12, which is the City Council members' comments on the Kentucky New Cities Annual Convention.
That's just an announcement.
If you have anything. Let's go to 13. Cemetery deeds for Francis Bell Jr. will be presented at the next council meeting.
I did have to take it off. I did have to take it off.
I don't think there's any announcements. And if there's no objection, I will adopt motion to adjourn. Since there's no objections by unanimous consent, motion approved, and this meeting adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.